In order, please. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, just in case you hit the wrong room, this is the Planning Commission. Commissioners are upstairs. Second item is the approval of the minutes from August and September. Is there any, we'll do August first, is there any additions or corrections to August? No? Is there a motion that we approve the minutes?
I move, we approve the minutes.
It's been moved as second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. All right, now the minutes for a September 5 meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. The first and only item really on the agenda tonight is One Meadowwood Drive. The applicant is here.
Good evening, Rob Lambert from Site Engineering Concepts here on behalf of the applicant. John, here's to my left, this is actually his family at home that he grew up in, and he had the opportunity to move in, was it this past summer? Back this past June. And as part of that, he'd like to subdivide two lots facing Conestoga Road. So this is Conestoga from the left to the right, Meadowwood is here to the right. The house is situated, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with it, it's a stone house, sits right off Conestoga Road, there's a stone wall that runs from Meadowwood to the west along Conestoga Road on the north hand, on the north side. There's an open kind of field area on the western part of the property, and that's the portion that they'd like to subdivide. So this is the existing conditions plan, it's in a large version of the cover sheet that I just showed. On the right is Meadowwood, on the bottom of the page is Conestoga Road. The house is in the brown color, there's actually a carriage house with an accessory dwelling in it, existing, and a garage, and a pool that are all to remain on the property. The current driveway is off of Meadowwood. And again, that open area is to the west on the property, you can see it on the left-hand side of that page.
One passing question on that particular print. There's a little thing that says brick to the left of the structure. The one that you just put down. See that, it's like a rectangle?
It's a rectangle.
Okay, it says brick, so I just...
It did just look like brick.
Okay.
So I'm gonna skip to Sheet 4. So this shows a conceptual layout. These are concept plans, these are fictitious houses that we put on the plan to show that they would meet the bulk area requirements, have a reasonable house and driveway, and the impervious coverage would work within the ordinance. So this plan is really concept-only. It's not a proposed plan, it's just here to simply show what could be built, and that what we were proposing was a reasonable configuration of the lots. The plan that we're really asking for approval for is Sheet 3. And so this is the real plan that we're asking for approval with the subdivision. So this shows the two lots, which is Lot 3 on the left, Lot 2, and the existing house will be Lot 1. Lot 1, the improvements really remain unchanged, and then Lots 2 and Lot 3 would be new lots that would be created. And it's relatively straightforward, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can jump to the review letters.
We go to the review letters.
Okay. So we have two review letters, one from Gannett Fleming and one from Gilmore. Both review letters are relatively, what I would consider, clean. There was a question about the sewage facility's planning module in Roger's letter, that was comment number one, as you're all aware. There's a little bit of a delay in getting planning modules, but we will be in that process. We'll talk to the solicitor about potentially getting a conditional final approval, so we can go through the political meeting part, and then it really just waits for the planning module for final approval, which will not be unusual. And then going down his review letter, we were asking for waivers to not identify wetlands on the property. It's really a highland site, there are really no low areas, didn't really see that it was needed. And then going down to, let's see here, comment number 4, and this also mirrors in some of the Gilmore letter comments, was talking about the right-of-way of Conestoga Road and the road width of Conestoga Road. This project will not increase traffic. I don't think it really justifies a additional right-of-way. In addition to that, the existing house is relatively close, very close, you can see it is non-conforming to the front yard setback of Conestoga Road. Giving that additional right-of-way really infringes upon that existing house, so we'd be not inclined to offer for dedication existing right-of-way. Furthermore, it's a PennDOT road right-of-way, I do not see PennDOT wanting to accept that right-of-way at this point. So if, even if one were required, we'd ask for a waiver. I believe the township doesn't necessarily have to require it, I believe the code section says the Board of Commissioners may require. They don't say they absolutely require that. So we'll discuss that with the Commissioners when we get there.
What is the right-of-way width on that road currently for most of the properties along it?
I think it's relatively consistent, what was it, 50 feet?
50 feet, and you're consistent with that?
Yeah. This property is actually interesting, when we did the survey, is actually deeded to the other side of Conestoga Road, so almost the entire right-of-way is taken out of this property, not the other side. The other question was about providing a sidewalk and curbing. So Conestoga Road has an existing rolled concrete curb, so it's a rolled gutter curb. Meadowwood has a granite curb, so we would propose not to change those. And then providing a sidewalk, I think it would be a hardship to provide it along Conestoga Road.
Excuse me one sec, let me just ask, or video person, if you can possibly focus. I wasn't sure if it was my eyes or...
No, it's just blurry.
Yeah, it is blurry.
You know, Rob, you might need to move the picture just to get us over to your, the other way. Thank you, but it's the focus is the problem.
Yeah, it's the focus is the problem. Twist that lens.
Yes, oh, you with the camera shot. Twist that lens.
Okay, I guess we'll deal with out of focus.
So, since it's not focusing, I'm sure this isn't going to help at all. So you can see, all along the property, there's a stone wall, so there's the, obviously the travel lane, there's the concrete curb that exists, there's a small grass strip, and then there's a kind of a stone retaining wall all the way along the front edge of the property. We will be disturbing a portion of it where we put in the new driveway, but to put in a sidewalk really is not practical to, you'd have to remove the wall and regrade the entire site to be able to get that sidewalk in. So, to the extent required, we'd ask for relief, but I believe the code again says when required by the Board, so I think technically the, a waiver would not be required in that instance.
Now, the other side of Meadowwood, does that have a sidewalk?
No, I don't think any sidewalks are in that area.
You mean Conestoga, or Meadowwood?
Well, okay, one Conestoga, but across from Meadowwood. Opposite side of the street. So there is no sidewalks on Conestoga?
There are until you get to Meadowwood. As soon as you get to Meadowwood, it stops.
It stops, okay.
And then there's no sidewalk, and so there's people that run along the side of the road.
I know.
Because they can't get from the neighborhood down to the park.
But there's no sidewalk going west. I think it stops there, period. I don't think anything goes west.
That's correct. That wall that you're talking about in their picture, does it go the entire length of the property on Conestoga?
It does, yes.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
So, the review letter, you know, is kind of in the context of, there's no plan to build at this time, and if the lots are developed in the future, it'll just be a grading permit.
Correct.
And if you were proposing, I guess this is more a question to staff, Roger, if you, you know, when they're proposing development at the same time as subdivision, then things like, we would be talking about things like sidewalks, and we would be talking about things like the slope of the cut of the driveway, and the sightlines, and things like that. And this is not to pick on this particular project, but this is a, this is a idiosyncrasy that we've seen before, when people come before us to just subdivide, but they're not going to develop. And then, you know, a year or two later, the development comes, and it's only grading permits, so it's not kind of subjected to the same process as if it were being subdivided and developed at the same time.
Well, it's not subjected to the same process, but it's subjected to the same rules and regulations.
No, I knew that. I know that, but it's a, it's a grading permit that, you know, the people, the public doesn't come and, you know, publicly speak about a grading permit, or publicly speak about whether or not, at the time of a grading permit, there's going to be a conversation about sidewalks or not. That's, it's more that. I know the ordinances are the same, but kind of the process is a little bit different. So, and that's happened to us a few, a few times, where, you know, it's, it's done in this kind of two-stage process, and it's a little bit of a, it kind of obfuscates the public. So I just want to be looking at it through the lens of, I think there's probably every intention to develop these two lots. But then also, the one other thing is, it mentioned it a little bit, but the comment number five?
In which review?
Which letter?
In the Gannett letter. If I'm doing my math correctly, these lots do exceed by more than two and a half times the width.
It's actually, the depth of lots is actually defined term under your subdivision code. It's the mean lot depth, and so if you take the mean, it's just under two and a half.
The mean, the mean lot?
It's extremely close. It's, one of, one of the calculations was, I think, 2.9, or 2.47, 2.48, something like that. And the code says generally compliant with, with the 2.5.
Okay, I mean, because when I looked at it, I was like, wow, those are really long, narrow lots. All right.
I have a quick question. Rob, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
When you're coming from Garrett Hill?
Yes.
And everybody's had to slow down to 25 miles an hour, and nobody really likes it, which is why the police love sitting there. You get out of there, and people can't wait to fire on the gas, and they come flying up that hill. And the crest, according to your plan, and also right now, it sits directly under a stop, like when you're driving up there, when you hit elevation 400, that is where the light is shining down, right at the top of the hill, so you can see the crest. You can't see anything beyond that crest of that hill till you get to that light, which is at elevation 400.
Right.
How do you, did you, I'm sure you considered this when you were placing your driveways, but how is that from a safety perspective for the people flying out of Garrett Hill, who are not going to see these cars pulling out of their driveway either direction until they get upon them?
So, this is a PennDOT road, so we're gonna have to go through the PennDOT process for the permitting. One of the things we've contemplated, currently we show two driveways. One of the things we've contemplated is actually a shared driveway access, it would do two things. One, it would limit the access and preserve more of the stone wall. The second thing it does is it brings you closer to that crest of that hill to address that issue.
Okay. So the two driveway thing, in other words, if this goes into the design phase for the project, for a home, that would be reviewed at that time?
We actually have to get a PennDOT permit at that time, and I anticipate PennDOT's gonna require that we are closer to the crest of the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, but the reality is, once these are subdivided into single lots, you could go to develop any, either one of them, PennDOT's not gonna deny you access there, they're just gonna put their best design forward. So, I mean...
They couldn't deny you access if they believe it's an unsafe condition.
I mean, they can't really say you can't build on a buildable lot because they don't like your...
No, but we anticipate that we'll probably have a shared driveway about this location, which is just about the crest of the hill, and it's gonna go off to service both lots. Again, it's gonna limit, you know, the disturbance to that wall, too, is what, one of the things that we're looking at.
Was there any consideration of possibly having the driveway come in over the back side from Meadowwood?
One time we contemplated that, we didn't want to encumber the larger lot with that driveway.
Put that Google Earth picture back up again showing Conestoga Road and the, and the wall. So, you gotta punch through the wall, obviously, to, to put in the driveways that would service the two new lots, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just concerned, as Elizabeth is, that not only are you going up to the crest of that hill, but you're also cutting down on the sightlines because of that, that wall being there.
Well, there's a portion of the wall that'll have to get rebuilt, because we're gonna have to create more of a flare. The sight distance is measured 10 feet back from the travel lane, right? So from the white line, 10 feet back is where we're gonna measure the sight distance, and we need a clear sight triangle to the oncoming traffic. And, you know, it's a triangle of what we're gonna have to rebuild there.
Well, I'm not a PennDOT engineer, but I mean, it seems like an awful lot of that wall's gonna have to come down to...
Yeah, that, or they're gonna make a military right-hand turn. It's gonna really be, you're gonna have to really square it off to go in there. How wide?
No, the, so part of the wall will have to be flared back to improve the sight distance. So when I say flared back, I mean that the, the wall itself, where the driveway is, will angle in to the driveway, and then probably wrap up a portion of the driveway. There's several properties along Conestoga Road that have that kind of similar condition.
Any other comments or questions from the Board?
Well, if they decide, if they decide, this is a question, Roger, if they decide that when they come back to develop this, do we get to see the plans again? We don't. Is that what I understand from the last dialogue?
The Planning Commission does not. It goes through Engineering for grading permits to construct a house on either lot.
Somewhere in the letter, I'm looking for it now, I had read that there was a little bit of a concern that there's a steep slope. I mean, in looking at the wall, it's pretty clear, there's a steep slope there where you are considering the driveway, but now I'm, now that I'm looking for the note, I'm not seeing...
I think the steep slopes are only the existing property, the existing house.
Yeah, but when you look at this picture, it's pretty clear with the, with the way that the wall is, that there's no cutting through...
I think it goes from about 400 in the back to 404 in the front.
I'm talking about specifically right out the wall.
It's comment three of my letter.
Yeah, thank you, I couldn't find it. Thank you.
Page 3, comment 3. And it's just calling it out, driveways are permitted use in the steep slope, so I'm just calling that out.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't find it again. All right.
I would like to see a sidewalk there, but the problem I see with that is, it would be so close to the old house. Even if you were to do a little path, sort of like they did on Newtown Road, for the old Adderbury property.
Yeah.
But you don't have any houses that close there. What is the distance back from there?
Twenty, about 24 feet from the right-of-way to the house.
How about from the wall to the house?
Uh, walls a few feet further, so maybe 28 feet, something like that.
From the top of the wall.
So how much space is there between the wall and the fence that we can see visualized In the picture?
I was just trying to estimate it. It's probably six, seven feet. Yeah, at most six, six, seven feet.
I mean, so there is, it is, there is that kind of space to do what we did at Adderbury.
Yeah, however, the other problem is, you have to get people up to that height, and then you have to do the...
Yeah, I don't remember this wall at the corner of Conestoga and Meadowwood. It's not there. So does this grade up as you, if you're coming off of Meadowwood and taking a right?
It picks up, so if you go right, it picks up 40 feet from Meadowwood?
So you could theoretically come off of Meadowwood, take a right on a path that, that grades up to walk in front of this fence, and then does it grade back down at the next property? Because I know that this wall is not all along Conestoga.
It's gonna grade up and down at each driveway. As they cut through the wall, right, then they're gonna have to go back down, and then go back up again.
I don't, I'm not sure I think that's worse than walking on Conestoga Road. I just walked that road last week.
The other side of Conestoga.
Yeah.
I mean, they own the whole street.
Who does?
The property goes across...
The property goes across the whole, almost the whole cartway, it belongs to them.
Oh, yeah.
Put the sidewalk on the other side of the street.
That would be clever.
Yeah, because there's a utility pole there.
I thought it was only one lot.
In that right-of-way. So evidently, they have room for a walkway.
Is there, is it every lot across the street, or just the one?
Uh, I believe there's more than one across the street. There's one on the, one here.
Well, it's only one lot now, so if it...
There is a, you know, an embankment on the other side, so it again would require a wall or a grading easement, which I'm not sure the other neighbor will give us a grading easement.
So they own the street?
It's a, it's a PennDOT right-of-way.
Thank you.
John, why, why is it that if we approve this tonight, they don't have to come back in front of us? That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right to me.
It's a, it's a minor final subdivision, because it's less than five lots.
Also because they're not proposing the development now. It's, this is the thing, they're not proposing the development now, this is the workaround I was talking about earlier.
Yeah, it is what it is, that's our procedure, so we have to just keep...
What, is to deny it until they're ready to build?
No.
Well, we could, we could recommend against any waivers or what have you, but that's really all, I mean, we don't have a lot of...
Because by right, they could almost do this.
We, we don't need to waive the right-of-way, we don't need to waive anything. Because if you don't know what's coming, you're better off having those for later.
What's coming is two single-family dwellings, right?
Right, no, but you don't see the design, so you don't know if maybe you need more right-of-way than what's there.
Yeah, but it's two single-family dwellings, they show it on Sheet 4, so if you don't like the layout, that, and it sounds like PennDOT's gonna make them put in a joint driveway, which would make a lot of sense.
Well, that's the kind of things I...
But we don't know what PennDOT's gonna do at this point.
Things that we don't know that, you know, could potentially be hazardous.
If this Planning Commission says you don't like two driveway, two curb cuts on that street, then you can make that determination.
We can do, we can put limitations on it like that?
Sure, sure. Even though it's a PennDOT road, you know, but you know what's coming. There's two large, single-family dwellings, these are one acre lots. Roger says they're gonna service the rear of these lots with sewer, public sewer, so across the back of the lots, there's gonna have to be an easement. And, you know, you've got some challenges with the wall and the roadway there, but, you know, I don't, I mean...
We don't have a lot of options here.
Yeah. Why don't we listen to some of the neighbors first, see what their thoughts are? Did you have a short question?
I do have one question. John, the, the timing of this, is there a holdup with the sewer modules? Is, what, what's the deal with, you were just saying that this is gonna be...
There are some, there's some downstream capacity issues with the system going down for treatment. That's with everything, it's not just this, it's every land development in place.
Right, no, no, I need that.
So, so they're gonna, they're gonna move forward with the planning module process, and that would be...
Just being Q.
Yeah, contingent upon, you know, approval would be contingent upon that.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, I agree with you that, at the end of the day, this is, you know, they can do this, and it's, and that's fine, it's just, it was more things like the sidewalks and curbs, and we, this is our opportunity, because it won't come back. That's what I was trying to say.
This is your opportunity to make any recommendations you want to make to the Board for, for those...
Yep, that's where, that's where I was going with my comment.
So what would you, what would you say? That would be a deed restriction, that they can't have two curb cuts? How, how would that be enforceable?
Well, it depends on how, how it's brought to the Board and what the Board decides to do, but you can make a recommendation for anything you want.
One, one curb cut, revise the plans with one curb cut, and that's the plan that gets approved.
But the, the...
There's no need for a deed restriction.
The curb cut is, I mean, right now, we're not even looking at a curb cut, we're just looking at lot lines. So that's not even applicable here. It's not, we're not approving a plan, we're approving lot lines, it's a lot line.
Right, but they are showing two driveways.
So there'd have to be some kind of deed restriction, saying that the, the more dangerous property cannot have a curb cut.
Well, I think there'd be ways of working that out.
We'd be amenable to a condition that would say that we could have one, we'd have a shared driveway access.
So that would be part on, written in the deed, or how would that work?
I think it would be part of our approval, and it, it may be...
But where would, it'd have to get recorded somehow to be enforceable?
On the plan.
John, we'd be amenable to a, a condition that said that we would have a shared driveway access, as approved by PennDOT.
At a point acceptable to PennDOT.
Yeah.
So that would be part of the, part of, written into the deed, then?
No, there's no deed restriction, it's just the conditions of approval. It'll go on the plan, maybe as a plan note, but the, the resolution that gets approved by the Board of Commissioners will have that as a, as a condition of approval.
So that'll be on the plan when they go to pull the grading permit?
And it goes on the recorded plan.
Exactly, that's goes on the recorded plan, okay, all right.
All right, why don't we listen to the neighbors? Anybody here for this plan, I would assume? Would anybody like to speak? Yes, come on up, please. Yes, the mic, please. And identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Bob McKernan. I live at 141 Browning, which backs up to the Remus property. And I just want to say that I'm a big fan of Joe Amargo, the late Joe. He operated on two of my children, and my only concern is, I'm not concerned about the road of Conestoga. I, I mean, the Nixon property across the street has the same type of stone wall, I mean, you know, builders can make that very easily safe, I would believe. My biggest concern is the sewerage, which isn't being addressed. The Remus's, when their daughter got married, they had a wedding in their backyard, and there, we had a sewer backup, now I don't know if it was because of the, I assume it was because of the wedding, in our property. And so we ended up putting, you know, cleanup and backflow valves and dig-ups and new pipes, and it cost us like $15,000. So I'm more concerned about that than this road access, and I'd like you to address that.
Stormwater or sewage?
Sewage, yeah. Is that property currently on public sewer?
It is.
It is?
And it connects to public sewer out on Meadowwood. And the proposed plan would be actually connect these two new dwellings out to Meadowwood. I believe the McKernan property is about here, which is higher, so it would be a very unusual hydraulic load that would have caused that issue, but I, I can't speak to the wedding issue.
We do have a little bit of a problem with the location of the sewer pipe on Browning Lane, and a lot of us don't have pitch from our houses to our street because of this location and height of the sewer line. So that's been, I don't know how many that involves, but it definitely involves, so I'm concerned about it as well.
So where, where is the sewer at? Each house is...
You need to come up here, so the TV people can hear you.
So each home is gonna have their own sewerage?
It will have it lateral to the public sewer.
Public line?
And the public sewers on Meadowwood.
So the piping will go to Meadowwood from the homes?
Correct. It'll, there'll be an easement.
Underneath or...
There'll be an easement across Lot 1 that will connect to Meadowwood. And so it'll be public sewer to Meadowwood.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience or comments?
Kathy?
Yes.
They're asking for a waiver on showing the sewer lines and storm drain lines, is that something that, that we would need, Roger? I mean, if, if there's a sewer problem, wouldn't that kind of show...
Well, what's, what's being asked is the waiver to show it for 500 feet around the property, correct, Rob?
Correct, correct. What we're proposing to do is show, what you've approved many times as an annual, showing everything within 500 feet.
What you're asking will be very thoroughly reviewed when they come in to get the grading permits. It's, it's part of the process we go through with, with every single lot that's developed.
And it was more than likely that they would have separate lines, they wouldn't be tapping into the line?
They would be required to have separate lines... They would be required to have separate lines. It will not be a common lateral with the two. It'll be, each, each new lot will have a separate line that will run out to the public sewer.
Okay. So, so Mr. McKernan, if you're having a problem, then it's, it might be at the, at the main coming in from Meadowbrook? Could that be it, Roger?
Uh, I don't know where the gentleman lives, and I can't speak to what the problem was, but I guess if Liz is familiar with something, we can talk about that separately. It sounds like that's something different than this.
Just elevation of pipes and bricks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where the line goes on Browning. I'd have to pull the maps and look at that, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Captain Cabbrey, I live on the corner of Conestoga and Meadowwood. I just have a question regarding storm management, where, once these lots are developed, where's...
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management. Cabbrey, C-A-B-R-E-Y, corner of Conestoga and Meadowwood.
Now, is there a stormwater problem there?
There is at times. Because Valley Run runs parallel to my property line.
Can you point that out?
Again, these...
So, I'm here, exactly. And Valley Run runs here, so there's this inlet between...
I, I think, I think with stormwater, if anything, this will help stormwater because anything that's built today, they have to develop a whole stormwater system that they didn't used to do in the past, but Roger, you can address that.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be required to meet the stormwater ordinance that's in place at the time of, of them constructing this. Would you be a substantial stormwater system for the houses that I think would be proposed here?
Will that lead, will that lead into Valley Run? No?
You're on the east side of the crest of the hill, so what Liz was pointing out was this is the crest of the hill here. So, these developed here will drain toward Boxwood and not back toward Meadowwood.
Can I, I, what is her name and address again?
C-A-B, C-A-B, R-A-B-Y, 767 Conestoga Road.
Thank you.
Yes, Melanie.
Hi, Melanie Cosgrove, 135 Browning Lane. First of all, I do want to thank the Aremas's for not overdeveloping. That's a lot of land. They could have done a lot more potentially with it, so... But I do have a question about the driveway situation that we've been discussing. The assumption, I think, in the discussion is that the two properties, should they ever be developed, would be developed simultaneously almost to the Penn, or there would be a shared driveway?
They didn't say that, but there would be...
But the implication is that there would be two developed lots. What if that scenario is only one developed lot? I mean, I think the whole neighborhood, at least the neighbors right behind there, we've had discussions, really do want to preserve the land and actually don't want to develop the land to the extent we can avoid it. So, in that scenario, where one side is developed, one is not, what happens there with that driveway?
There would be a vacant lot there.
No, no, with the driveway.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the driveway would be installed, and, and say Lot Three were developed, you know, if you had a common driveway, the common driveway would go in, you'd have an easement across Lot Two, which could remain vacant, and it would just access Lot Three, and at such time that Lot Two would get developed, then that piece would go, or vice versa, however you'd want to do it.
I think the point you were trying to make earlier, Rob, is that you, you guys are going to work with PennDOT to, you know, if we put out the condition, one curb cut and a shared driveway, which I get it, you sound amenable, it, it will all be driven by what's the best spot for that driveway cut, and then whether both lots are developed or one at a time or whatever, it will all flow from that.
Correct. There's going to be one point that's going to be basically approved by PennDOT, and then both will access that.
Right, and it's not going to matter which lot is ultimately developed first because the curb cut will just be where it is.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
That answers your question? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? No? All right, we're back to the board. Any further questions?
So, I, I think the only thing I'd want to flesh out for a minute is the concept of sidewalks. And, you know, Liz, you live right there, so you know it better than most of us, knowing the wall and all that. What, what do you think about the concept of, of sidewalks there or on the other side?
You know, Rob probably can even say where it's possible because of his, you know, looking at the land so much longer, but it would be nice to see if we could get something in there. We're having that whole problem around our neighborhood right now, is we have a lot of pedestrian traffic on some of these connectors off of Conestoga. We've got Eithon Avenue issues. We've got, once you get, anybody wants to get from Boxwood down to the park, we just have, it'd be nice to be able to consider pedestrian walkways while we have an opportunity. What do you think is something that would be feasible there?
In a lot of cases, I'm, I'm a proponent of the walkways. This is a tough location, you know? You have a steep slope on the south side, and you have the wall on the north side. Contemplating, if you contemplate going on top of the wall, you wind up with another fence, is what you're going to wind up with. So, you would need a fence on top of the wall for fall protection, right? And so, you'd have basically an alley of fences, which I'm not sure is a comfortable walk, walking environment there. So, you know, removing kind of the historic wall that, that sits there to put in a sidewalk didn't seem like a, a good solution either. So, uh, to be honest, in this section, I'm not sure there is a elegant solution to a sidewalk, was really where I came back to.
What's across the street? They own the road to the other side, but what's across the street?
Another house.
Is that the Nixon property? I'm not sure.
How much of the shoulder do you have in your deed on the other side of the street?
Just about to the right-of-way line, but if you look at the photograph, it's hard to see.
You mean to the cartway line or the paved area?
Uh, no, actually to the right-of-way line. So, there's the, the cartway line, and then there's another few feet before you get to the property line and the right-of-way line. But the issue is, is this area right here, all along here, there's not really any shoulder. It goes to a, I don't know, a two-to-one slope or a one-to-one slope rate as you get off of the road to go back up to get to where this hedge row is. And so, again, through this section here, it's, if you were driving, you're, you're low in, in the area right here. Um, you know, you have the one side that's high and then the, the wall on the other side.
Rob, how come the properties on the south side aren't, the property owners aren't delineated the way that they are on the Meadowwood side?
Usually, we just do it in a joiner, and seeing that the road divided them, we did not identify the ones on the south side.
Oh, I, I guess, but the, but the, but the property goes across the street? Okay.
This will be more helpful. So, this is kind of looking up, so Meadow, Meadowwood is here, Browning comes up this way, Conestoga's here. So, you really have a larger property that sits here. You have one that sits back, and then you have the corner, this is Boxwood here to the left, right? So, the one that just got rebuilt on the corner of Boxwood and Conestoga, there's another one. I'm just thinking of Liz's comment of getting to Boxwood. Um, you know, so you'd have two there, you have this larger piece, and then you have one, two properties going, going to the east. So, you have one, two, three properties that, and this property, which is the larger property, that's, has the, the slope all the way along this front side here.
I don't think having it on the other side of the street is a logical thing, because then, because then the person who owns the house would have to clear the sidewalk and go across the street to shovel the sidewalk. That's probably not going to happen unless there's a suit, so I think it's a problem.
Rob, the markers on the street, how easily can they be moved left? In other words, you, you pave to a certain extent, left and right.
There is not, there is not much shoulder.
Can you move the markers on the line to give yourself enough room for the sidewalk?
I, I do not believe so.
You're saying shift the roadway?
I defer to Damon, but I...
Not, not the pavement, just move the lines. So, the road...
I mean, I think that's...
Looking at the amount of shoulder outside of the white line, I don't think that's going to be feasible.
Yeah.
So, in this case, obviously, you'd need a wall to put the sidewalk on the other side of the road. I mean, there's really no other way.
On the other side, I think you'd wind up with a wall.
You'd need to build another wall in order to make that sidewalk.
You would also need PennDOT approval to do anything, no matter what side you're talking about.
I mean, as much as we might want sidewalks and we unfortunately don't stick by them, and now's, now is certainly not the time to, I don't see it here. I just don't see it.
It's, that, I looked at it hard.
As much as I think sidewalks are great, this one's a challenge.
Yeah, I think...
This is a challenge at best.
If this were the one missing link, and you said, okay, went all the way to Lancaster Avenue going west on Conestoga Road, and this was the one piece, I'd say, yes, it's worth it. But the other pieces is going west, there is no more sidewalk. And I don't, you know, thinking about it, I, I don't know where it picks back up again. It might pick back up at...
Conestoga and West Wayne.
Yeah, West Wayne. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of room in the property, but you'd have to remove the wall and back the whole wall up, so...
But then you have the, the old house close to the property too, so again...
You really start infringing upon the house.
I mean, that's just beyond what we would normally expect. This is a tough one.
Yeah, I think probably we have to pass on the sidewalk on this. Okay, would somebody, if there's no further questions?
I guess I'm still not sure what the comment about the right-of-way that Gilmore was proposing, something with the right-of-way. Can, can you touch on that?
The ultimate right-of-way is supposed to be eighty feet, and the cartway width is supposed to be forty feet. That's per the Sado. That's why it's commented on. Um, it's going to be up to the board if they want to impose that on the applicant or not.
So, it's supposed to be forty and eighty. What is it right now?
Fifty.
Rob, do you have those dimensions?
Right-of-way is fifty. I don't, I don't have the cartway, but the cartway's probably twenty-six.
And if the road needed to be widened, it still could be done within the fifty-foot right-of-way?
That's correct. Yes, and at this point, you know, I think the only way they're going to wa, you know, they're going to widen the whole stretch. They're not going to widen just along this...
Right, but so that fifty feet goes everywhere, right? So, I mean, if you have the fifty feet, they have the ability to widen and make drainage improvements or whatever they might want to do. So, it's not as if they're at the limit.
Correct.
They're not going to wa, they're not going to, the expense of widening that road would be pretty much...
I'm ju, I'm just saying that they have, they have access to do work.
On the south side, you have utility poles they'd have to move, and on the north side, you have to move the wall.
There's a wall on the other side, too.
You know what? I don't know that we're supposed to solve this problem tonight, but I will say that this is the thing that we went up against on Newtown Road at Attaberry. And it's, it, it comes up every single time. If we don't start requiring the sidewalks, we're never going to have the sidewalks, and then we're going to have the perpetual conversation about, well, you know, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. Well, eventually, they will be sidewalks to places, and, you know, the township just spent a ton of money and got a grant to redo Clem McCrone Park, and it's beautiful. And we want people who live on Meadowwood and back in the back part of, of Browning, and, and even families on Boxwood and wherever, to be able to go and use the park. And so, I, I don't know what the answer is. Rob, when you talked about two fences, I, I mean, I guess I would say we, the one fence could be moved and, and, and have a path, and, you know, we required this at Attaberry, and I don't think they liked it, but the fact of the matter is, it's a very lovely little meandering path that every time I drive by Newtown Road and see it, I'm like, I'm really glad we did that because eventually, we're hoping to have trails. If we, if we don't, if, if there's a condition we could put in that doesn't release us or release the township of the, I'm not ready to just completely let go of this, even if it's to let the township work it out at a later point. That's, that's the part.
So, then let's just, then if we, if we approve this, then we just approve with the two stipulations. The stipulations being the one that we talked about, the driveway, one-cut driveway, and that they have sidewalks. And then let, let people down the road, when, when they finally decide to develop it, then at least they're, at least they're on the plan. Then they have to address it, and if they need to get rid of the sidewalks, they'll have to go to zoning, and someone else, the Commissioners, will make the decision.
Yeah, because there's, there's two properties west of this that have a very, they are similar properties in the sense that there's some bigger farmland, and they connect basically all the way up to the edge of Irwin's property. And I, I just, I think that there's potential here that, that...
And that's, that's all you do. We'll just, we'll make it...
I don't know what the right wording is.
Yeah, we'll make it conditional on the plan, as they had mentioned before, that sidewalks, you know, we recommend that sidewalks be put into the plan as well as a single curb cut to, to Conestoga Road.
I'm, I'm fine with a sidewalk or walking path, but, you know...
Whatever, but you gotta put something on, because as you mentioned before, if they're going to develop west of this, okay, if there's, if there's no sidewalks or potential sidewalks here, they'll say, look, there's nothing above us, so therefore, why should we put anything below us? So, at least if it's there, you know, someone else will have to make that decision when the time comes.
Well, there is a big difference in this property and Attaberry. Attaberry, the houses were much further from the roadway. The, the block here is the old house that's about thirty feet from the roadway. So, if you, uh, put that sidewalk in, it's going to be within feet of the front door.
How many feet?
So, depending on how it gets designed, you know, one of the, you know...
Because I got to tell you, my front, my, the front of my house is about twenty-five feet from the sidewalk on Midland, and it's perfectly lovely. I say goodbye, I say good morning to the kids who walk down the street.
They'll put it on the south side of the fence, Kathy.
Yeah, it could go on the other side.
It'll move to the south side of the fence.
Okay, now, on Attaberry's property, we also let them do a wood chip pair rather than the cement.
Yep.
How do you have a sidewalk to nowhere in front of the Aremas property, and then how do you convince the other neighbors next to the Aremas's to put a sidewalk in? If they don't decide to have a sidewalk in their house, then you have this sidewalk that goes about five hundred yards, that goes nowhere, and you're on Conestoga Road where it's a heavy, heavily trafficked street, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, the whole, the whole issue is that if you don't start on one piece...
Hold up, if we're going to talk, let's, one at a time, come up to the mic.
The whole issue is if you start, don't start on the one piece, then when the others are redeveloped or whatever. So, that's what we've come up against.
Those houses are not going to be redeveloped.
That's, that's what we've come up against, is that if you don't reserve the land...
Here's the thought process, I believe, okay, is that if, if that, if we put that stipulation in their plan that we approve, if we approve it, okay, you have to remember, whatever we approve tonight, when, five, two years, one year, three days from now, they come back and decide that they want to develop this land, we can't then put it in, okay? So, if they develop it, and there's a sidewalk there, okay, before they develop south of this or west of this, excuse me, okay, now there's someplace where you start. If, if you don't start, okay, even if it's, even though you say it's a sidewalk going to nowhere, it may not be. It may be the beginning of the sidewalk going to somewhere. If it's not there to begin with, then, then when they develop below it, okay...
Charlie, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, you got to start someplace.
I would like to say, first of all, thanks for all your time, this is our property. You know, that is a historic wall. I did move in, we lost my father, we're trying to make this work so the next generation can come in. My wife, my kids, we can live here, my mom can go to the carriage house. You know, we've tried to explore all the options, you know, once we found out that my father had passed, we've already had developers already calling us, they want to buy the whole thing, you know, and we've had, you know, some great conversations with neighbors. We're really trying to do this the right way, you know. We could, we have been offered, you know, money for this whole property, but we love this house, we love the neighborhood, we love the character of this house, and we're trying to do this the right way, and put two lots in the back, and make it all work and keep the character. So, I really, I've lived there for 30 years. I don't know where a sidewalk would go, because I do look out my kitchen window, and the road is pretty closed, so you're going to start cutting into a historic wall, I just don't see where a sidewalk would work. And honestly, I brought it up to these guys, because I wouldn't mind a sidewalk either, if, but at the same time, there is no sidewalk going down infinity, and I can't imagine, I would let my two kids walk on Conestoga Road, so I just don't, I'm sorry to chime in, but I, but in terms of the sidewalk, so I just wanted you guys to understand that we're trying to do this the right way for everybody. And I don't see, and thank you for speaking up, a sidewalk where a sidewalk would work.
Okay, group, I don't think a sidewalk is practical here, and I know, because I've said it many times, you need to start somewhere. And we've let a lot of properties slide without sidewalks that actually should have had sidewalks because they're in a more populated area. This is populated, but it's a country road effect there with that. It's the same as Newtown Road, basically. But they were able to put it in there because the houses were not so close to the street, and they had a meandering path there.
No, that's, I mean, that's what I was saying, too, Kathy, is that this is, I mean, as much as I normally would say, like, let's do everything to put a sidewalk in, I'm struggling to find anything reasonable here.
Well, let me take a poll of the board here. How many people are pro-sidewalk on this, putting it in on the plan? Because that would make them do it.
Say it again, Kathy.
This is just a poll-
She wants to know who wants to put that contingency in there.
Who here would support putting a sidewalk on this property, raise your hand.
You know-
That's not what I was saying, I was saying, I didn't want to give up the stipulation that it could-
But I think if we put it on the plan-
If you put it on the plan, it becomes a problem.
It becomes a problem.
I feel.
So, I-
Because you're putting something that's not feasible on a plan.
Let me chime in here. I understand the whole idea about the sidewalks, but I also think there has to be a rule of reasonableness, and I don't think it's particularly reasonable to squeeze a sidewalk into this situation, and it's really punitive on the property owner, and it's not their fault. It's been like that for 100 years, probably, and I just don't see changing it.
Kathy? You still have approximately 12 feet or so of right-of-way on either side of Conestoga, the way it's constructed now. Once this plan's approved, you'll still have that 12 feet or so right-of-way, that's pretty close, right, Rob? 12, 13 feet, something like that. So, you do have some room in there, and then-
Is that a paved right-of-way?
No, no.
No, but we could go in, say, sidewalks went in everywhere, we have the room.
That's the area where the wall is now, where you're looking at that picture.
So, the wall would have to-
You have about 12 feet, 13 feet from the white line going to your right there. So, if you would ever choose to-
You'd have to cut the wall.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, maybe this would be the last piece, then. So, you're saying, the reality, Roger, is that down the road, if everything else were, and the township were really committed to it, they, in fact, they already can do it. So, we don't need to require it because-
You have 12 feet, so you wouldn't, yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to require it now, because if it's already in the right-of-way, then this would be maybe the last connecting to the road.
And as Rob mentioned, with the existing house, you don't have that much further to go anyway, until you start lopping off the porch of that house, so, you know, that's pretty tight there.
Yeah, I agree. So, is the general feel of the board, then, that we're not in favor of putting sidewalks on this, correct?
No.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, with that out of the way, is there a recommendation from, oh, we have more people? Okay.
I'm Ashley Wyckoff Clark, I live right behind-
Okay, let me slow you down a second here.
Yeah, slow down, give your name and your address, please.
Ashley Wyckoff Clark.
Clark, okay.
C-L-A-R-K.
Got that, Trish?
I live at 139 Browning, which I believe is right here, yeah. So, my question is, obviously, ideally, we wouldn't want any property developed behind us, but my question is, how many, what's the setback right here, what's this requirement for, where they could-
That's their build, the building envelope is inside the dotted line.
So, 40 feet, and then you could start to build right on that line? You don't need to go another 15 feet in from that line?
No, just like you can build 40 feet from that line, they can build 40 feet from that line.
So, you're saying, I could build 40 feet from here? Got you, okay, thank you.
That doesn't mean they're going to, most likely, they would not, but that's the building envelope.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is, you had said, you know, you're trying to subdivide them, what are the plans for further development, the timeline? Because obviously, if we're subdividing, we are going to develop them, that's pretty obvious, but so, is there a timeline? You said you had some people interested already in some of the lots.
Come on up to the microphone if you want to make a statement.
So, that's probably a conversation you guys are going to have.
Okay.
All right, any more questions, comments? All right, back to the board. Does somebody want to make a proposal here?
I move that we approve this, but we want to add the condition about one driveway, one curb cut.
Single curb cut.
Yep, that-
For access to lots 2 and 3.
It's already going to be contingent on the sewer, yeah.
So, I would make a recommendation, I would make a motion that we recommend approval, adding the condition that there would be one curb cut.
Agree.
And granting the waivers. Yeah, one curb cut for access to lots 2 and 3, and granting the waivers.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, you're passed. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next.
Just a quick note before we move on, I think it would be great if we could do something where we have a plan where sidewalks make sense for Radnor, you know?
Delaware County has a plan.
For sidewalks?
For sidewalks in the entire county.
I think we need to, we need to think about that, because it really makes it difficult to make these decisions if we don't have a plan.
Well, I think Conestoga Road really needs sidewalks, however, logically speaking-
But there's ways, there's ways to kind of use the side roads and maybe a small section across Conestoga, and then back into a side road, but someone has to lay that out and make, you know-
I see, you mean, kind of meander back and forth.
Just find ways to create safe pathways without, it doesn't necessarily have to run all the way along Conestoga, but it would get certain areas covered so that no one's really completely, yeah, so no one's completely stuck where they are, you know?
Regina, that's usually part of the comprehensive plan.
Well, hopefully, it will be, then.
Okay, I'm looking for my agenda under here, do we have a planning module or something? Yes, the-
It's got added, yeah.
Okay. We just need to bring up that, do we need to take any action on it, or?
Roger, is there anything we need to know about this item 4 that-
This is the planning module for Cabrini.
And it's just a formality here?
They're asking to move forward with their planning module submission. They have a number of downstream capacity certifications, there's still a handful that are outstanding, but what they're asking is this board to move it forward contingent upon them receiving all of their downstream capacity. They have another form that's being filed with the County Planning Commission, and then once all that's together, that will be assembled and sent into DEP, or go in front of the Board of Commissioners first, and depending on the capacity issues, then move on to DEP.
That's the court's decision.
So, this is just a step of moving this thing forward and getting the board's contingent approval on this.
And do you typically go ahead with this even though there's outstanding information? I mean, it's really a matter of-
At this point, yeah, because it still has to be approved by the Commissioners, and that can't be done until the, until the capacity issues are all put to rest.
So, at this point, we're just putting it into their court?
Correct, moving it forward, yes.
Which is kind of what's going to happen with this plan, because they can't get the sewer capacity yet.
Okay.
The plan we just approved. So, we take no action, we just acknowledge again, correct?
No, we have to make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation of approval.
Once, once it's identified.
Actually, this is not a recommendation, this is an approval, because this is a process that the Planning Commission has to approve. So, you can approve this contingent upon the applicant receiving all of their downstream capacity certifications.
So, I move that we approve this contingent upon the applicant receiving all of its downstream capacity approvals.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So much for that one.
How can I make the motion without the call of the city?
Is there any old business? New business?
Actually, Roger, I have a quick question. What is the update on the whole sewage capacity issue? I mean, how does that-
I don't know, Steve's involved in that, I couldn't tell you.
Thank you. Okay, under new business-
That was it.
Oh, I got something new. We're going to have a nominating committee for chairman next year, and Charlie, you